I called to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. I now ask for a moment of silence. Thanks, folks. Commissioner Ochoa, would you leave us, lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? We now move on to item B, roll call. Kayla?
Commissioner Tao?
Here.
Smith?
Present.
You?
Present.
Present.
Big up, come on.
Swigger?
Present.
There you go.
Present.
Ochoa?
Present.
Greggins?
Present.
And Chairperson Gonzalez.
Present.
We have a quorum. Kayla will now read information about how the public may participate in the meeting.
Members of the audience who wish to address the Planning Commission are requested to complete a speaker card available at the podium at the back of the council chamber. Please submit the completed card to the clerk before the item is called, preferably before the meeting begins. I would like to briefly go over the process of submitting comments to the Planning Commission. Please submit your public comment to the Planning Commission electronically no later than one P M. on the day of the meeting. Comments received before the deadline will be sent to the Planning Commission and will be part of the record and mentioned as part of the public comment portion of the agenda. Material may be emailed to planningweb@cityofmerced.gov and should be limited to three hundred words or less. Please specify which portion of the agenda you were commenting on, for example, oral communications or item number. Your comments will be presented to the Planning Commission at the appropriate time. Any correspondence received after one P M. will be distributed to the Planning Commission and retained for the official record. To view video or listen to the Planning Commission meeting live, go to the city's website, www.cityofmerced.gov, Facebook Live, or Comcast Public Access Channel ninety-six.
Thank you, Kayla. We now move on to item C, public comment. Members of the public who wish to speak on any matter not listed on the agenda may speak during this portion of the meeting and will be allotted three minutes. State law prohibits the Planning Commission from acting at this meeting on any matter raised during the public comment period. Members of the public who wish to speak on a matter that is listed on the agenda will be called upon to speak during discussion of that item. Kayla, do we have any requests to speak?
No.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the public who wish to speak? Is this regarding an agenda item or a public comment? We'll call you right up, sir, when you're, when it comes up for your item. Thank you. We now move on to item D, consent calendar, including minutes. Would the Commission like to remove any items for a separate consideration? Do we have any requests to speak forms for any of the consent items?
No.
If there are no folks who would like to remove items or discuss meeting minutes, I will accept the motion.
Motion to approve, or motion to accept the minutes.
I second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Greggins to accept the meeting minutes and a second by Commissioner Ochoa. We now move it to a vote. And it is passed unanimously. Thank you. We're gonna clear this. Oh, there we go. We now move on to item E, public hearings. Item E one, Kayla?
Conditional use permit number twenty-five dash zero zero ten initiated by Golden Valley Engineering, applicant for TTA Lawyer LLC property owner. This application involves a request to convert an existing four thousand nine hundred fifty square foot industrial building into a fitness center at twenty-two forty-one Cessna Way. The subject site is generally located at the northwest corner of Beechcraft Avenue and Cessna Way. The subject site has a general plan designation of industrial and a zoning classification of light industrial. This is a public hearing.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Matt Livingston. I'm the assistant planner. And this project is conditional use permit number twenty-five dash zero zero one zero for a fitness center at two-two-four-one Cessna Way. So here's a location map. As you can see, the site is at the northwest corner of Cessna Way and Beechcraft Avenue, and it's located in the southwest portion of Merced. That is the current street view of what the site looks like. Here's the site plan. So the building is a forty-nine hundred and fifty square foot building. There's an entrance and an exit into the site off of Cessna Way and Beechcraft Avenue. And the refuse container is located to the north of the site for access from the refuse department. Here's the proposed floor plan. As you can see in the entrance, there's a reception area. There's three offices. There's two restrooms. And then the actual fitness center itself is broken up into two parts. The main part is the large artificial turf area on the left side of the floor plan. And the top right part of the floor plan is going to be rubber gym mats. So this fitness center will be operated by SWAG, which is a nonprofit. It stands for Students with Aspiring Goals. They will employ one staff member. It will be an appointment-based gym, so there won't be people coming in and out at any time. There will be periods of time during the day where the building's vacant if there's no appointments going on at that time. And the applicant stated that their main goal is to provide private training and coaching opportunities to high schoolers and younger aged kids. So as far as parking, the site plan provides fourteen parking spaces, which does not meet the typically required sixteen parking spaces for indoor commercial recreational uses. That sixteen number is based off of a more traditional gym where people are coming and going more freely. We do have a section in our code, it's section twenty dot three eight dot zero five zero, which lists out some possible ways projects can be approved if they don't meet the parking requirements. Some examples of that are utilizing shared parking with a nearby site, utilizing common parking, having lower than normal demand, or submitting a transportation demand management plan. So the applicant's free to apply for any of the parking reductions that they see fit, but staff believes that the low demand section of the parking reduction section of the code applies for this project. That section states that the number of parking spaces may be reduced if the land use will not utilize the required number of spaces due to the nature of the specific use. And this will have to be proven by the Director of Development Services with a parking demand study. So if this project is approved tonight, that approval will be contingent upon the applicant qualifying for a parking reduction. Some of the notable conditions, the fire department requested condition number fourteen, which says fire protection systems shall be monitored by fire alarm systems or as otherwise required by the fire department. They haven't indicated any desire to put up any signage, but if they do in the future, they do have to comply with the Merced Municipal Code regarding signs. And like I stated before, the Director of Development Services will have to review and approve a parking demand study. And this will be required to be submitted during the building permit stage or prior to obtaining a business license. So after the public hearing, the Planning Commission may approve, disapprove, or modify categorical exemption number twenty-five dash zero zero one four and conditional use permit number twenty-five dash zero zero one zero, subject to the twenty-eight conditions found in the staff report. And I'm available for questions, as well as the applicant is also here.
All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions for the project planner? I have Commissioner Greggins.
Thank you, Chair. Um, am I having a deja vu moment, or have we seen something very similar to this in the recent past?
Yeah, they, they, they had a site come to you guys maybe a month and a half ago, located across the street, and it's very similar use, almost the exact same use, actually.
Okay, um, that kind of leads me into the next question here is, um, what's the nature of the adjacent businesses around it? Do we, do we know what that is?
It's, uh, it's zone industrial, so it's a lot of just light industrial uses. So there's, there's a mini storage, there's a pest control use nearby. Uh, I believe the, the big site to the bottom left is a truck rental agency, if I'm not mistaken. So just light industrial uses.
All right, thank you. Um, and I know the project hours are by appointment, by appointment. Do we know how late those appointments will be going?
They indicated that they will be wrapping them up by eight P M.
Okay, thank you.
We now have a question from Commissioner Ochoa.
Hello. I had a question, just a general question, if, in regard to the parking spaces that are available there, if this was continuously open, would it need the sixteen spaces? I know they're trying to do permit to do the reduction for this project, so it's just more for...
Yeah, it would. Um, so the reason why they can qualify for the parking reduction is because it's appointment-based rather than just being open. But if it was a more traditional gym, then yeah, they wouldn't need the, the full sixteen.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions from the Commissioners for the planner? Yep. Commissioner Swigger?
Sorry. Okay, I just want to make sure, this is an additional? So there's gonna be two sites?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, I just wanted to make sure. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Swigger. Are there any other questions for our project planner at this time? Hearing and seeing none, this is a public hearing, and at this time, we'll open the hearing for public comment. I invite the applicant to speak. The applicant will have a total of fifteen minutes, including rebuttal time. If you wish to reserve time for rebuttal, please conclude your remarks to give yourself time. Again, the applicant is not required to speak, but if you can just touch on, sir, just the, the, the second location, how they're gonna be tied together, and just, you know, help us confirm that we're not closing one and opening up the other. Thank you.
All right, excuse me. Good afternoon, Planning Commission. My name is Devon Hilliard. I am the founder of Students with Aspiring Goals, also known as SWAG. It is kind of deja vu, because we were here, I want to say, a month, month and a half ago, opening our adjacent facility. So the difference between the two facilities is the adjacent facility right now that's operating is more of a workout facility, has, you know, weights in there, a small kind of turf area, and that's pretty much what it's used for, just to work out. Ours is gonna be more one-on-one training. We're gonna have, um, eventually, hopefully, you know, a baseball tunnel in there to do like some private lessons, and then a lot of soccer private lessons, possible football private lessons in there. So that's kind of the little difference between the two of the facilities. Like, the other one is more of a workout boot camp, semi-private. Ours is gonna be more in a one-on-one, maybe two-on-one, and more, you know, balls flying, you know, kind of in there, as opposed to not just, you know, lifting weights in there. We don't have, we won't have any weights in our facility. So when they want to go work out and get, you know, stronger, more explosive, they would be going across the street to that facility.
Thank, thank you for sharing. We really appreciate it. Are there any questions from the Commission for the applicant? No?
And another thing real quick, I could say?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, uh, we have a facility in Atwater right now, so we will be closing the Atwater facility if this is approved and moving everything to Merced. We were in Merced, I want to say, in twenty fifteen, uh, prior, uh, prior to COVID. And then from there, we moved to, to Atwater, so we will be closing our Atwater facility and move, you know, all of our programs to Merced. And one of the reasons is that, uh, currently, right now, we have a pretty big contract with Merced City School District with a lot of the Merced City Schools kids, and this area is, I want to say about four or five schools in that general area. So right down the street from the school, or from our new facility is the Continuation School, the Valley School, you know, right there, you know. Of course, we don't like talking about it. Merced Probation is right down the street from there. Um, and then I think Tenaya is right down the street, and Gracie, I believe. So I think it's a more, you know, it's a better area, especially for, you know, that area, and I think it'll bring something that, you know, the kids in that area could really, you know, enjoy and, you know, kind of go in there and not, it'd just be like a movie or something on TV. They could actually go in there and, you know, see what the professionals or people are doing that, you know, that are on TV.
Absolutely. Again, we thank you for your time today. We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Again, this is a public hearing. Kayla, was there any leader or any opposition on this?
No.
No? Okay. Again, this is a public hearing. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak in person, have sent emails or letters prior to this meeting?
No.
No? At this time, we close the public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion. Any comments? I particularly, really excited about the opportunity. I think the addition to their other facility makes sense for, for them. They really appreciate the growth. It's been kind of a growing staple here in, in Merced, as well as a name in the Central Valley. I had folks talking about this program out in Fresno and Clovis. They have similar programs out there, and the name came up. SWAG is, you know, is a SWAG name. So people are like, hey, you guys got something going on out there, so really exciting about it. Commissioner Ochoa?
Uh, I just want to echo exactly what you just said. Uh, I really like the program. You know, I'm always about the, the kids we have here and the things you guys are doing out in the community. Man, it's awesome, awesome to see, and all these kids have these big dreams and really appreciate you guys going above and beyond to do something exactly like this.
Commissioner Greggins?
Yeah, awesome. I was gonna make a motion, but go for it.
I have Commissioner Greggins, and then I also have Commissioner Tao that might have a comment.
Oh, yeah, I'm just gonna make comment that this, this is a great idea, and I, I support this because, you know, investing in the youth, you know, fitness, sports, you know, health, wellness, this is a great idea. And especially that air in that district, you really need this, because in the long run, it's gonna bring a positive environment to it, so thank you for doing this.
Commissioner Greggins?
Yes, I agree with all of our commission, commissioners on the same facts, so I echo everything that they just said. So I'd like to go ahead and make an emotion to approve if there is no other discussion of the categorical exemption, environmental review twenty-five dash zero zero one four, and the conditional use permit twenty-five, twenty-five dash zero zero one zero, subject to the twenty-eight conditions found in the staff report.
I second that.
I have a first by Commissioner Greggins, I have a second by Commissioner Ochoa. We now move it to a vote. Let's cast your votes. And we have it passed unanimously. Thanks a lot, guys. Let's go back to agenda items. And we now move on to item E two. Kayla?
Conditional use permit number twenty-five dash zero zero one one and restaurant encroachment permit number twenty-five dash zero 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 one initiated by Sayir Lara, applicant for Michael Dale McLutcheon, trustee property owner. This application involves a request to operate a bar that serves beer and wine for onsite and offsite consumption with a front patio area at five-two-one West Main Street, and to operate a food truck in the parking lot behind the building. The subject site is generally located on the north side of West Main Street, approximately a hundred and fifty feet west of Canal Street. The subject site has a general plan designation of regional community commercial and a zoning classification of central commercial. This is a public hearing.
Okay, uh, like Kayla said, this is conditional lease permit twenty-five dash zero zero one one and restaurant encroachment permit, uh, number twenty-five dash zero 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 one. So here's the location map. As you can see, the site, it's on West Main Street, uh, between M Street and Canal Street. And as you can see on the map on the right, it's right in the middle of downtown. Here's the proposed floor plan. So on the bottom at the front entrance, uh, that's where the outdoor patio area will be. Uh, but then as you walk in, there's multiple seating options, uh, there's tables, booths, and a bar rail. Um, and the outdoor patio area shall have to comply with the City of Merced requirements for ADA access. So this bar will be applying for a type forty-two A B C license, which allows them to serve beer and wine. Um, if this project is approved tonight, it, that approval is contingent upon the Merced City Council approving a public convenience or necessity for alcohol sales at the site. The bar itself will not sell any food, but there will be a food truck behind the site, uh, located in the private parking lot behind the site. The suite that the bar will be located in is roughly six hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, like I said, there will be an outdoor patio area in front of the site, and they are proposing to be open seven days a week. So Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, they'd be open twelve-thirty P M. to one A M. Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, they'd be open two-thirty P M. to eleven P M. And on Sundays, it would just be twelve-thirty P M. to eleven P M. So the site's located within the City of Merced High Quality Transit Corridor, and it's also within the city's downtown parking district, so it's exempt from any parking requirements. Uh, but like I said, there is parking in the front on West Main Street. There's a private-owned parking lot directly behind the site. And furthermore, uh, to the north, there's a city-owned parking lot. Here is a citywide incident map showing all of the incidents that occurred. This data is from June twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty-four to June twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-five. And here is incidents that occurred within five hundred feet of the site. Um, this data is also from that same time period. Uh, when issuing alcohol permits, the main incidents that are looked at are public intoxication, of which there were three within five hundred feet in that time period. Disturbances and assaults, uh, of which there were one hundred and six in that time period. Merced Municipal Code violations, uh, there was forty-seven, and narcotics violations, there was two. We did run this request by the police department, and they did not have any issues of it. They're in support of it. Uh, the conditions that are on this permit are typical for this kind of use. And based on their crime analysis, the police department does not expect this project to adversely affect the surrounding neighborhood or to be an extra burden on the police resources. So here is where the food truck will be located. Um, it's, like I said, it's in the private parking lot, uh, behind the site. Some of the notable conditions, uh, for the food truck itself, we ran that by the fire department, and their only condition was to make sure that it's at least ten feet away from basically anything, so any structures or any vehicles. Uh, like I said earlier, condition thirteen, they will need to, um, apply for a finding of public convenience or necessity from the city council. Um, adult entertainment, which is defined by the Merced Municipal Code five dot five eight and twenty dot six zero, are not allowed on the premises. Any music that is played shall be kept to a minimum noise level so as not to travel outside of the immediate area around the building. And the outdoor patio seating area shall be delineated by a wrought iron fence on all sides and not enclosed by the building. Um, the fence shall be a minimum of three feet height and comply with all fire code requirements. So like I mentioned earlier, the hours of operation, uh, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, they need to be closed by one A M. Sunday, Tuesday, Wednesday, they need to be closed by eleven P M. Um, if the police department does receive excessive calls, um, regarding noise or disturbances to the residents at the Merced lofts above them, then the police chief may reduce the hours of operation at their discretion. For the food truck itself, um, the food truck may operate between nine A M. and eleven P M. Thursday through Saturday, then nine A M. through ten P M. the rest of the days of the week. Um, in the future, the hours of operation may be extended at the discretion of the Director of Development Services or possibly referred back to the Planning Commission. Uh, and if the police department receives excessive calls from residents of the Merced Lofts regarding noise, then the hours of operation, uh, may be reduced back to nine P M., which is the standard for food trucks. So after the public hearing, the Planning Commission may approve, disapprove, or modify categorical exemption, which is environmental review, um, number twenty-five dash zero zero one eight, and conditional use permit number twenty-five dash zero zero one one, subject to the forty-one conditions in the staff report, as well as a restaurant encroachment permit number twenty-five dash zero 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 one. I'm here for questions, and the applicant is also here. If you guys have any questions for him?
I'm gonna need to re- Do I need to reset these?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm gonna reset them real quick, guys, Kay. And then if you have a question, please, please go ahead and throw it in there again, please. Now, Commissioner Swigger?
Okay, I just want to make sure. Um, you said that the police department doesn't have a problem? They don't, they don't think that there's gonna be an issue with the parking or an issue with, um, anybody, you know, congregating back there? Um, they didn't have an issue with the lighting or any of that stuff?
No, um, there's, there's lighting in that parking lot behind them. No, there's there's lighting in that parking lot behind them. They didn't have any concerns. The parking, like I said, is located within two separate parking areas that exempt them from parking requirements.
But all the but majority of this parking in that area is restricted and or assigned? So how are they gonna patrol, be able to, and this might be going on the next section, we have discussion, but that's they don't have they don't have a concern with with any parking issues?
Not that they brought up, and the owner of the lofts was in favor of the truck going there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
That that was one of my questions as well, is the understanding that the lofts were right above them and most of that parking lot is assigned to the folks that live there. What, you know, what were their thoughts on it? But you're saying that the the folks that own the loft were in support of having that food truck back there?
Yeah, that's correct. The property owner.
Okay, property owner. Commissioner Ochoa?
And just to be clear, the residents of the lofts and those who rent below were not notified of this project?
The, no. The public hearing notices are sent out to the property owners. So that's.
Yeah, we'll we'll give you some time to speak. Yeah, thank you, though. Reset that. Are there any other questions? For the planning planner at this time? All right. This is a public hearing, and at this time, we'll open the hearing to for public comment. I invite the applicant to to speak. The applicant will have a total of fifteen minutes, including rebuttal time. If you wish to reserve time for rebuttal, please conclude your remarks to give yourself time.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Thank you. I really want to thank Matt and Francisco for all their help with this project. You know, this is gonna, this is a passion project of mine. I'm an education consultant. That's my day to day. This is something that as somebody who went to a university out of Merced, I went to Long Beach State, I feel that our, I'm we can have something like what we had in the downtowns of Long Beach or some of the other college towns that I've seen. This place is not big, but I feel that it can be that. What the reason we want to open up at twelve thirty on Saturdays and Sundays is because I'm a college football fan. I feel we need that. In Long Beach, we would go watch college football starting at noon and stay there till six, seven, till the last game. You know, no, right now, Sundays, most places close, so we want to bring some life into downtown on Sundays. So that's very important. The patio is gonna be a big component of this because I remember being in Long Beach hanging out in the patio. You know, just watching people, people seem, and then it's just with Bob Harbor Square, the renovation is gonna be amazing. For the parades, it's gonna be amazing being there. We would never have music outside on the patio. We'll always ask our patrons to be respectful to to everybody. And and so, yeah, we're we really want to bring something to that. The reason the the owner of the loft is so supportive is because he, we all know that that side of downtown is neglected. And to be honest, he's tired of renting to nail salons, barber shops, and the same. There's nothing wrong with those businesses, but there's two barber shops in that same building. So he's ready for something that can be there for years and years, and this can be it. And so he's very excited for this. That's why there's he doesn't have a problem with the parking situation. That's why he's been so supportive for this. And he also knows that this that Merced needs something like this. And so the the place, I don't think we, it was mentioned, is gonna be called the Valley Public House. And why is it gonna be called the Valley Public House? It has a short, has a cool short nickname called BP. So besides that, we're really gonna showcase Valley breweries. So so we're gonna have our normal, you know, normal taps that everybody drinks and growing up here in the valley, growing up here in Atwater, I have a lot of friends that are country boys, and they don't know much about microbrews, so they always want their course course light, and I want them to, here's your course light, but I want you, why don't you try this one? Why don't you try this one for next time, right? I don't want to put them down for ordering a course light. And so we're really, we have several breweries that we're already talking to. And honestly, as soon as we start, we have our first brewery can start, and every month, well, we're gonna have a new one. And so really showcase what the valley does as far, because I mean, Modesto has like, I think it was five breweries, Series has three, you know, so that's a lot, a lot of, we can be busy all year long. So and I'm open to any questions.
Yeah, thank you for sharing, and it sounds like you really have a lot of passion for it. And I think for downtown, just in general, we can probably bring it when we talk about it. Just it's, we have a lot of stuff going on downtown, and this is a great time. Are there any other questions for the applicant from the commissioners? No? Commissioner Ochoa?
Yeah. How's it going? How's it going? Just to be transparent, Sayir and I have been in contact to none, just in the last couple of days about the project, just to talk about it, his vision, kind of what he shared tonight. But I I did want to ask, how many people do you plan on employing here?
So that actually it was on my notes. So the the restaurant, the pub itself, because it's not a restaurant, it's gonna be strictly beer and wine. We're we're looking to employ anywhere between four and six people. The food truck, we're gonna probably will employ another two to three. You know, the food trucks usually that, so it can be a total from seven to nine people. And so this is bringing jobs to the area, seven to nine new jobs. Well-paying jobs. We'll start off probably at twenty dollars an hour plus tips.
And as far as the food truck goes, do you plan on having the same one there the whole time? Or are you going to switch them out?
So I've actually, I've already been like talking to some people. I I it's one of those things where we'll see. I kind of want to showcase different food trucks, but I kind of want the same one because I've been approached by there's a lot of Mexican food trucks around, but there's other Mexican foods, other Mexican food restaurants in the area, and I don't want to hurt their business by that. So I want to bring something new. You know, if you're going to a pub, burgers and hot dogs, burgers and sausages, so things like that. So I'm very conscious about the neighbors, because I believe that we all can exist cohesively, right? And and we already have too much Mexican food. I'm sorry, I'm Mexican, by the way, so but.
I hear you. Are there any other questions for the applicant from the commission? All right. Hearing and seeing none. Thank you so much for your time today. We really appreciate it. Kayla, again, this is a public hearing, and was there any opposition on this?
We do have E J Lorenzi that I called to the podium.
E J Yelmo Lorenzi, owner of McNamara Plaza, right behind this operation. I wish Mr. Lara would have taken the time to check with his neighbors, to check with all the fellow businesses in the area, and maybe we could have worked together and helped with each other. I'm trying to put this all in three minutes, that once I found out about this, it we put in close to forty hours of investigation. And what happened is ev- almost every person that is in business in that area has the big problem with parking. The problem that we have, we have a beautiful city parking lot, and it's full from nine o'clock in the morning till three till four o'clock. There is a tremendous amount of problems with traffic on Eighteenth Street in regards to finding parking Wells Fargo, if you go there anytime in the afternoon. The problem is, is that from Wells Fargo to the post office on K Street, cars are backed up trying to find a parking place. I took a lot of study on this. I went to his competitors, and you know what's sad about this is that Mr. Lara is a good friend of mine. I backed him for city council. I think he's a great guy. But and I think his idea of what he's doing is is a nice adventure and something good for downtown. But the food truck is not available for parking because what's gonna happen is that people are gonna be coming in there to the food truck. And if I can ask one question, who owns the food truck?
Yeah, we will. We can have some time for rebuttal on that, but we'll we'll note that.
Okay.
We'll get that answered for you, sir.
But I went over to the Tioga and the Sequoia, which is the same type of operation that Mr. Lara is doing. And they're closed on Monday and Tuesdays, and they're start with the food truck at four o'clock in the afternoon till ten. And Mr. Lara's situation that, on the permit anyway, it shows that the food truck is supposed to would be starting at nine o'clock in the morning till one o'clock in the after, in the in the morning. I see, I think that has changed a little bit there. But anyway, what I think I would like to see Mr. Lara be ha- be able to be successful in his adventure. In his adventure, but there is a problem with parking. Frank Quintero, who's sitting right across from me, has helped us with downtown parking with the Arbor for that parking lot to satisfy parking for the downtown and Main Street in Merced. If we didn't have that, there would be hardly any parking for, we're probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred spaces of parking.
Am I okay? Yep, you're you're good. Kayla, go ahead and add twelve minutes to that, because again, we have, maybe we can ask Trevor, too. We we have an opposition, and our opposition usually gets fifteen minutes. And we just put on three. So if you got more to say, sir, go ahead and Trevor, can you hear me? So.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, is that, does that sound like a sound decision?
I mean, has has he identified himself as the leader of opposition or seen merely appearing during public comment?
No, well, we asked for opposition. Kayla said there wasn't generally opposition, but he he's he's opposing. So would we give him the the full fifteen minutes or three?
Three.
Three, okay.
So what what I'll wrap this up real fast. I think the project could work, but the problem of the time of the of the of the food truck is is the one that we really can should be having for discussion.
Gotcha.
And I think that the food truck, if the Tioga and the Sequoia has it for three minutes for okay, if they if they could do that, that's, this is probably the same idea what Mr. Lara should be doing.
Gotcha. Thank you so much for your time. Do we want to go to rebuttal at the time? Applicant, we'd like to invite the applicant to come back up. Okay, on opposition. Okay, okay, gotcha.
So, yeah, and I know Mr. Lorenzi. I love him. He's a great guy. So, you know, here we have something that can. So as far as the food truck, so here we go. We just added nine, parking, we just added ninety six spots to downtown. So that's the whole reason why we switched to one way, right? So that's a, was it ninety six spots, if I'm not mistaken, were added? The, where the food truck's gonna be is private, not public. So again, we're going back to private. Tioga Sequoia, actually, I I drove by there today. They take up two public places, two public parking spots in front of their business. We're taking one private parking spot. So I don't think it's fair to to say that we're taking up parking when as you know, because it's a private parking spot that wouldn't be open to the public otherwise. The the as far as who's gonna, the food truck, we talked a little bit about that earlier. The food truck gonna be operated by businesses who have a license and are approved by the Merced County Health Department. So I'm go, we're following strict guidelines for that. Nobody's not just gonna pick somebody off the street and, hey, come sell food here. And I think that's, yeah, I think that's.
Oh, stay stay there for one second, sir. Commissioner Greggins, you have a question for the applicant?
Yeah, just in regards to the food truck, would it be just for the patrons of your establishment or for the community at large?
For everybody. The patrons of the, the patrons of establishments can grab food and bring it into into the pub.
Okay.
But it's open to everybody. I did want, I think there was a misconception about the operating hours. We're not trying to open up at nine A M. So for for the for the food truck.
I think that that was that was mentioned that the food truck operation hours that the gentleman mentioned was listed as nine A M. to one A M. So for the food truck, do we do we have that drilled down as far as, I think it might be in our presentation of when is the food truck gonna be there?
So on weekends, I would love it to be there at opening twelve thirty, one o'clock by the time they're set up, right? Because again, if you're watching college football, I've, that's something that we will love it to be there. During the week, same time as Tioga Sequoia, two, three o'clock, they probably start setting up, open up at three o'clock.
Yeah.
Same time. We're not gonna have somebody there earlier.
Understands. Thank you. And then.
I do have a follow up.
Can I answer his question?
No.
I had Commissioner Ochoa?
No, that was gonna be my question is, I don't think the food truck's gonna be operating at nine A M. I think it's just gonna be sporadic based on business time.
It would follow our business hours.
Yeah, thank you for confirming. Commissioner Greggins, did you have a follow up?
Yeah, so with the concern of parking, you know, and the hours and things of that nature, understandably, it's on private property, although allowing you know, the the community at large to come to the food truck, that would bring traffic into Arbor Lane, which then fills up the other parking lots around it. Because there's really no access from Main Street back to the back unless they walk through your your establishment. Is that correct?
Well, there is access through the alley. I mean, like, right now, no matter where you, like, you can walk through Canal Street, there's the alley. So you can park there, you can walk through there, you can walk, if you're twenty one and over, you can walk through through my pub. You can eat at my pub.
Is the Arbor Lane right there, that little?
No, Arbor Lane's on the, it's at the end of like where, so we're here.
It's on the east side?
On the east side.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So they can walk through Arbor Lane.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
What what would be filling up would be the the parking lot with those shops, and then where Rabellos is. That parking lot is, I mean, just just a jam packed, like, you know, and that's where that's where everybody would be walking through and then cross the street.
Thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Swigger?
Is, have you taken into consideration of possibly splitting the two? My concern is going into that, how do, how can you guarantee the people that rent that in that facility are gonna be able to park where they, you know, when they come to their office or they're they're able to come to their their loft if there are people who are at the food truck and they are.
Well, it would be no then. So if you guys look at that, it's part of that parking lot is is public.
Right, but 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 at any given time, there's hardly ever any vacant spots. So that would, that's my thing is and I understand we don't go to the tenants, they go to the property owner. Unfortunately, the tenants are the ones that are using those spots.
Well, the tenants, so the owner is dedicating a spot to us. It's not taking away from the tenants.
No, I I, well, I understand that, but the patrons of the food truck will be using those spots.
They won't, they they know that they can't park there because it's it's clearly stated everywhere.
I I understand that, but they're still, that's where I think, that's my concern.
And we'll, you know, we'll have the whoever's running that food truck, it's it's like not whoever whoever I partner up to for that food truck, we'll let them know. This is part of making sure that you are aware who's parking here and they're not, they're not parking there, right? And so, but I go back to.
Yeah, you can't control that, yeah.
I'm sorry?
I said that that unfortunately can't be controlled.
I know, but it's the same with Tioga Sequoia. They can't, they're in a public parking spot. They're taking up spots that could have gone to the residents that live upstairs, so we go back.
Right, no, no, I'm not, yeah, absolutely. I think my my biggest concern is where where you have the potential spot is actually toward its next closest to the building. And with that, it's not very lit.
It is, it is. There's a right above it. So there's actually three different options that we provided to the plant, to the city planners. There is one on the opposite end. Both sides have lights right above, big, big, bright lights that shine, and so it'll be, it's very lit. One of the options was towards like One of the options was towards like, that, right underneath the, the post in the middle. And so there was three options, it's very well lit back there. And one of the big reasons I do wanna add, so this area, we need more people in that area because our business is there. I've been there paying rent for four months already and my windows already got scratched. The windows get broken from my neighbors, right? So, and the farmer's insurance, their windows got broken not too long ago. So the fact that there's gonna be life there is gonna deter some of that, right? There's gonna be people there that's gonna help out with some of those issues that they had in the past. Because before, the minute you pass Destinos, it's dead and dark until you get to.
Okay.
Old Tappet Town Hotel.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Francisco.
Oh, I just wanted to take a step back and just add some clarification regarding the hours of operation. Obviously, you got two parallel things, you've got the, the pub, which would have, as shown in the report, specific hours of operation, which in the condition, which would be condition, one second here, condition number sixteen, it only regulates the end time, so Thursday, Friday, Saturday, end time would be one AM, and then during the week, weeknights, Sunday through Wednesday, the end time would be eleven PM. And condition, in regarding to the food truck, condition number thirty-nine doesn't necessarily state that the, the hours that the food truck is gonna be there, but the hours that it can be there. So the time range that it's allowed to be there. The code allows, as Matt mentioned, outright, food truck operations between nine AM and nine PM. So with this request, they're asking special approval to extend those hours. And so the range that they're requesting to be able to operate within would be, again, it would be bifurcated. So Thursday, Friday and Saturday, it would be between nine AM and eleven PM. And all the other days, which would be Sunday through Wednesday, would be nine AM through ten PM. So the permit, the condition essentially just shows a range that they can operate within.
Thank you, Francisco, for clarifying that, yes.
Did you have a follow-up? No. Are there any other questions for the applicant at this time from the commission? All right, thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Do you have any members of the public who wish to speak in person, have sent emails or letters prior to this meeting?
Yes, we do have Sayre Lara, who requested to speak. Okay, excellent. Then no others.
Think that that was already provided to us. Do, do we need to touch on that?
And she has one.
Go back to my program. Yeah, yeah. Good. All right, welcome.
Cool. Alrighty, well, good evening commissioners and thank you for having me. My name is Michael Gomez and a little bit about me, I grew up here in Merced. And I'm very much involved in the community. So I'm here to express my strong support for Said Lara's downtown business proposal. The project, I believe, aligns with the city's goals in revitalizing the downtown area, especially right there with the Bob Hart Square renovations and all the construction work that had taken place. With Said Lara's pub being directly across, it's gonna bring the much-needed traffic that's right over there. So I also just wanted to touch base on the tight parking concerns. That tight parking, while it is a burden, it's a really good sign of a healthy and thriving downtown, which is something that we need and we need to continue to strive for. As well as, continue to address those parking concerns. And I do believe that in the near future, those issues will be solved, especially for our folks here in Merced that are against this business proposal. So I just wanted to keep this quick. I thank you guys for having me up here again, and I do urge you guys to approve this beneficial project for the folks here in Merced and for folks that wanna come and hang out downtown. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
I now call Gloria Valdovinos to the podium.
Hi, everybody. My name is Gloria Valdovinos. I am the executive director to the Downtown Merced Partnership. I didn't plan on speaking, I'm really excited to hear, you know, another night, life of business coming into downtown. I just kinda wanted to make sure that I made a comment that there's a lot of brick and mortars, a lot of restaurants that are in downtown Merced that, you know, restaurant business isn't really easy. And so I just wanted to make sure that I made a comment that maybe you could consider more of a permanent food truck, less one that's kind of rotating out, one that complements downtown as opposed to kind of competes with our businesses. Businesses here really invest, brick and mortars invest in twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a, a year into downtown Merced. And so I personally, from a personal perspective, just kind of having food trucks kinda come in, pull in for a couple of hours and then kind of leave while they're taking away, you know, from the brick and mortars. I just kind of, I'm not too crazy about that on a personal sense, so I just wanted to make a comment, again, super supportive of it. I'm really excited to see, kind of hearing all these new things that are coming to downtown Merced, but I just wanted to make sure I made a comment about that, but, yeah, thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have anybody else who would like to speak at this time?
No, we do not, but I did want to note that we did receive public comment from one person as well who's not here to speak, and those were emailed to the commissioners in advance. And then we also received a letter from MID that was provided to the commissioners ahead of the meeting as well.
Thank you, Kayla. Is that all that's required? It's just a notification? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Do you have any members who wish to speak at this pers, at this time? Is there anybody else in the public who wishes to speak at this time? Hearing and seeing none, at this time, we close the public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Ochoa?
Awesome. I just wanna say my personal preference of this project, I really like the idea of it being open a little bit later and especially it being a sports bar, I feel like especially in downtown Merced, we don't have a true kind of sports area, so I see the vision that the applicant kinda has for this position, so. I, I understand your concern about the parking too, me too. I think people are definitely going to go and park there to get food from the food truck, even though it's a parking, private parking lot. I'm sure there's ample signs there that says this is private parking. However, I don't think that falls on the applicant to enforce that, that kind of falls on parking enforcement. And they are out there, and so I hope they do take the time to go there a little bit more often, but I don't think that falls on the, on the applicant, and I don't believe it's a condition of approval, so I don't believe we can deny the project based on the parking issue of people coming in just to use the food truck.
Commissioner Swigger?
Microphone on, sorry. I love the idea of, of your bar, as long as you show SCC games on Saturday morning, I'll be done. But no, I, I love the idea, my concern is the food truck in the back. And not just the parking, it's the lighting, it's the location, it's very secluded back there in the evening. So that's where my concern is from, that's where I'm coming from as, I don't know if I would visit the food truck at nine o'clock at night. And I don't wanna have anybody else feel unsafe in that back area. So that's, that is where my concern is. The extended hours, I have a little bit of an issue with because if not, the only other restaurant that would be open, it's not, actually not even a restaurant, it would be the bar on Canal, because I believe every other restaurant closes at about ten o'clock. So that would be a concern of, of mine that I wanna bring forward as far as the hours of, of the food truck staying there until after midnight or at least eleven o'clock. And then I've already said my piece about the parking, but again, it's not your, it's not your responsibility. But I just, I know it's gonna be an issue, so that's where the concern is. And then also the, the tenants, what they would say, but if everybody's in, in favor of it, you know, we, we kinda have to take that into consideration also, but that's where, that's where I stand. Thank you.
Commissioner Greggins?
All in all, I'm, I'm in favor of the project. Definitely concerned about the food truck and the food truck location, though I think those will work themselves out in time. But I do have an additional question from possibly staff in regards to the, I think on the map it's listed as Arbor Lane, but it's actually more of an alley that separates the two properties. What's the direction of traffic flow? Because I believe that's a one-way alley. And where does it dump out? Does it dump out into Canal or does it dump out into M Street?
I believe it dumps out into M.
To M Street? Okay.
I'm looking at our director here, I, I think he mentioned that it goes towards the direction of Canal Street.
So it dumps out into Canal? Okay, then that takes away my concern.
Yep. All right. Are there any other comments before I give mine? No? Well, my comments are, I mean, really in favor of the project, and I, I think the parking issue is, is a city issue. And I think it's something that, that the city is aware of and has been actively tackling, especially with the revitalization projects that we've been working on. And that the projects that we are now really engaged in over the next couple of years of, of preparing our downtown for, for that growth, the UC Merced growth that we have. And then also with high street rail and all the, all that jazz and all those conversations that we're having is the city is actively trying to build our downtown area up for visits, for growth. And part of that process is finding parking for all these great folks. So I think it's, it's something that will handle itself over time with the city's a hundred percent engagement on it. Actively trying to make and find us solutions for it, that'll work itself out. So those are my comments on that. As far as the food truck, we, we have a lot of food trucks that come through, and what I wanna do with this one is just say thank you for doing it the right way. Because as we know, there's a lot of pop-ups that don't come through these doors asking for approval, making sure they check the boxes, making sure that they're health-certified. We see that almost on every corner in Merced. But we have an applicant and other applicants that do come forward with their food truck ideas, one of the first things we do is we thank them for coming through our doors and doing it the right way. So thank you for doing that. Commissioner Greggins?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to, to kinda reiterate on the project. When I first came in, I wanted to make sure that this project aligned with the city's goals for the downtown revitalization project. I think it does, I think it meets
It does.
the direction that the city wants to go and the, and reinforces the work that's already been done. So in that, I am in favor. And I think Commissioner Ochoa would like to make a motion.
Commissioner Ochoa?
Yeah, so part of my concern too was the, you know, tenants in the loss, but I think it's in there that if it does become an issue, the police, it's, it'll be able to come back to us, so I feel a little bit more at ease approving the, the project because of that stipulation there.
Commissioner Swigger?
Is there any chance that they could be separate entities? You know, that, I, I just, that food truck is, not that I don't.
Well, I, I would say this, his plan is not to open up his own food truck and operate it, but to actually have folks, I know that, have folks come in.
But they're piggybacked.
What do you mean, piggybacked?
They're together, they're being addressed together.
Oh, okay.
So is there a way?
You're talking about like as, as in a separate? Francisco, maybe you can help us here.
It is, it is considered one application, the application includes both the request for the bar and for the food truck. If you wanted to adjust any of the conditions, you, you could do so, but it's considered part of one application.
So just to clarify on this, we would have to, if we approved it, we approve both, if we deny, we deny both.
Not necessarily, if you wanted to deny one aspect of it, you could deny one aspect of it.
Because I think that was Commissioner Swigger's question.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just to tackle that piece of it is the, the fact that he's allowing the food truck to get your food and then bring that into the bar. And having the food truck there after, right, right, after all the other restaurants are closed, it's a place for his patrons to go grab a bite to eat because everything is closed. And I think we've, you know, that, that's kind of where we're, we're at on the combination of both.
It's part of the business plan.
Part of the business plan for him, is to have that food truck available for his patrons to grab something to eat when everything else in that area is closed.
All right, well, with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve categorical exemption, environmental review number twenty-five dash zero zero one eight, conditional use permit number twenty-five dash zero zero one one, subject to the forty-one conditions found in the staff report, and the restaurant encroachment permit number twenty-five dash zero zero one.
Second.
I have a motion to approve by Commissioner Ochoa, and I have a second by Commissioner Greggins. Now move it to a vote. And it has passed five to two. Thank you.
I would just like to say one thing that it's over with now. I'd like to speak to the committee, to the commissioners. As the director of PBIT downtown, we have a big problem regarding parking. We don't have really enough.
Yep, we can, we can talk to staff afterwards if you like, if you wanna hang around, we'll.
I think, I think this is a very important part because the city of Merced does not have the money to buy parking, additional parking in Merced. We have a big, large problem in downtown parking.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead and clear that one. Let's go back to. All right, we now move on to item F, action items.
Okay, I believe that's staff's on the agenda?
It is.
Staff reports?
Continue with other items. There's an item that is not a public hearing, it would be done the same way. But skipping the public hearing part, for example, the meeting cancellations. Usually Johnny would cover that piece of it, and then it would go into, there's nothing on the act, action items, then it'll go to item G, which is information items?
Okay, good evening, commission, Francisco Mendoza with the planning division, I'm filling in for Johnny Lan. So I just kinda wanted to report on some upcoming meetings and projects that would be going to set meetings. We do have an, an application that's set to go to the planning commission on August sixth. So that is a conditional use permit, that is for, for a mobile food vendor. And so that, the location for that is eleven twenty-two R Street. There's a market there right now, there's currently approval for one food truck. So they are requesting approval to have a second food truck at that location. So again, that would be on August sixth. The other item that we have scheduled for another meeting, let's take a look here, would be on September seventeenth. On September seventeenth, we have a tentative subdivision map application. So this would be for a smaller application compared to some of the ones that you've seen recently. It would be for seventeen residential lots on about three and a half acres. This, this project site is located in southeast Merced at twenty-two five zero zero Child's Avenue. So it's just a little bit east of Golden Valley High School. And again, that would be for seventeen residential lots. The zoning on it is R dash one five, which means the lots would be at least five thousand square feet.
Perfect. We now move to item H, which is adjournment. And I will accept a motion from anybody to adjourn.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn in the name of Jose Delgado, who left us tonight after four years of serving the planning commission.
Six years. And we have a motion by Commissioner Greggins and we have a second by Commissioner Swigger. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it has passed unanimously.